Recording in progress. All please rise for the Philippine National Anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advinggula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barzaga, Vaskug, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaik, Bulutwigtang, Bustos, Kabredo, Kagas, Kahayonuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huangko Jaime, Ko Huangko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Bella, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labadlabad, Lakson, Laksonoel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayab, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongtuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Humaren, Uno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iolohyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Iadamarie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salseda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvameh, Santos, Saulu, Silverio, Singzon Rochelle, Singzon Ronald, Singzon Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Ernolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Juseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, T. Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozothuazon, Vergara, Verzosa, Villia, Villia Forte Luis Raymond, Villia Forte Miguel Luis, Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razas Suarez, Villia Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Ed Vic, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 309 members responded to the call.
With 309 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move for the Department of Approval of the Journal of the previous session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The approval of the Journal is deferred. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 8198, establishing the Alaminas General Hospital in Alaminas, Pangasinan, by Representatives Estrella and Celeste.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8199, requiring critical information infrastructure institutions to adopt and implement adequate measures to protect their ICT systems and infrastructure by Representatives Revilia Brian, Mercado Revilia, and Revilia Ramondjolo.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 8205, expanding the prohibited acts of discrimination against women and other gender-based minorities on account of sex and gender, by Representative Tambunting.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8206, prohibiting gender discrimination in employment advertising, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8207, providing measures to protect individuals engaged in food, grocery, and pharmacy delivery services by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8208, providing for enhanced protection, security, benefits, and incentives for news and media workers by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8209, providing for career opportunities to the youth through the establishment of job placement centers in public high schools, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
Resolutions: House Resolution 994, congratulating and commending the Philippine contingent who participated and won 58 gold medals, 86 silver medals, and 116 bronze medals in the 30-second C Games held in Cambodia last May 5 to 16, 2023, by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 995, congratulating and commending the members of Team Filipinas for their remarkable performance in the 30-second C Games in Cambodia and granting additional incentives to the gold, silver, and bronze medal awardees from the leaders and members of the House of Representatives, by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 996, congratulating and commending Philippine national team delegates for their outstanding representation of the country in the 2023 C Games in Cambodia, by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 997, expressing profound congratulations and commendation to Philippine athlete Vanessa Palomar Sarno for her exceptional representation of the Philippines in her outstanding achievement in the women's 71-kilogram category of the Asian Weightlifting Championships held from May 3 to 13, 2023 in Jinju, South Korea, and in her effortless performance in claiming the gold medal in the 71-kilogram category in the recently concluded 30-second C Games, by Representative Chato.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 998, urging the House Committees on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples and Human Rights to conduct an inquiry on the series of aerial bombings in Balbalan-Kalinga Province and its impact on the indigenous community by Representatives Manuel, Mangawang, Brosas, and Castro Franz.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 999, urging the Committee on Agriculture and Food to immediately conduct an investigation on the bio-fertilizer distribution program of the Department of Agriculture, by Representatives Brosas, Castro Franz, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1000, congratulating and commending the UP law for winning the World Championship in the 2022-2023 Prize Media Law Moot Court Competition International Rounds, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1001, congratulating and commending Sandy Asusano for winning the gold medal in the Women's Javelin Trove F-54 at the 5th Indian Open Para Athletics International Championships, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1002, congratulating and commending Bianca Bustamante for winning Race 2 at the F1 Academy, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1003, congratulating and commending Andre Quizon for winning the gold medal in the men's shot put F-53 at the 5th Indian Open Para Athletics International Championships, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1004, congratulating and commending Gerald "Pete" Mangliwon for winning the gold medal in the men's 400-meter T-52-54 category at the 5th Indian Open Para Athletics International Championships, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1005, congratulating Mr. Alexis Castillo-Allegado of Mariano Marco State University for being the overall top-notchure on the April 2023 Civil Engineers Licenseur Examination, by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1006, congratulating Ms. Ira Cassandra Sugitan Castro, MD of Mariano Marco State University, for being the overall top-notchure and commending MMSU for garnering 100% passing rate on the March 2023 Physician Licenseur Examination, by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1007, urging the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, the Manila International Airport Authority, and the Manila Electric Company to engage and enter into a special service contract that takes into consideration the intrinsic technical requirements of DINAEA operation and maintenance and ensure to do the same in all airports and their respective electricity suppliers across the country, by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Resolution 1008, urging the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries to conduct an inquiry of the numerous instances of banking-related hacks and scams, by Representative Herrera.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1009, resolution congratulating and commending the men and women of the Philippine delegation for their passion and dedication in the field of sports and their exceptional performance in 30-second Southeast Asian Games held in Nomben, Cambodia, by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Dalipe, Libanan, Marcos, Romualdes Iadamarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications: Letter dated April 11, 2023 of the DOT Undersecretary for Administration and Finance, transmitting to the House of Representatives certain financial reports for the month of March 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 12, 2023, of the Iloilo Provincial Planning and Development Office submitting to the House a copy of their fiscal and financial accomplishment report of the Regional Project Monitoring and Evaluation System as of December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 12, 2023, of the Veterans Memorial Medical Center Acting Director submitting to the House a copy of their report on the actual income collection and utilization as of March 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Various reports and letters submitted by certain municipal, city, and provincial governments regarding their fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the local government support fund.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 24, 2023, from the Regulatory Affairs of Smart Broadband Incorporated and Digital Mobile Philippines Incorporated, submitting to the House a copy of their annual reports for the year ending December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Letter dated April 26, 2023, of the Director of DOST Industrial Technology Development Institute, informing the House that certain financial reports as of March 31, 2023 were posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 27, 2023, of the Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs and Head of PLLO, submitting to the House certain financial accountability reports.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 28, 2023, of the Dito Telecommunity Chief Administrative Officer submitting to the House a copy of their annual report on SIM Registration Act progress from January to December 2022.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
Letter dated April 28, 2023, of the DBM Secretary, submitting to the House copies of certain reports on the status of the fiscal year 2023 budget, IE programs, releases, and balances as of March 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Municipality of Santa Tomas, Province of Pangasinan Town, Fiesta 2023 for March 20 to 26, 2023, with theme "Santa Tomas 2023: Overcoming Challenges, Building Resilience, and Sustaining Excellence."
To the Committee on Local Government.
Annual Audit Reports on Certain Water Districts for the year ending December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Various quarterly financial and fiscal reports of operations for the quarter ending March 31, 2023, submitted by the Provinces of Agusan del Norte and Lenao del Norte.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 17, 2023, of the Executive Secretary, Office of the President, Malacanyang, transmitting two original copies of Republic Act 11939, which was signed by President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports: Committee Report 559, submitted by the Special Committee on Nuclear Energy, the Committee on Appropriations, and the Committee on Waste and Means on House Bill 8218. Committee Report 560, submitted by the Committees on Transportation and Appropriations on House Bill 8239. Committee Reports 561 to 574, submitted by the Committee on Justice and Appropriation on House Bills 8247 to 8260, respectively. Committee Report 575 and 577, submitted by the Committees on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bills 8261 and 8263, respectively. Committee Report 576, submitted by the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries on House Bill 8262. Committee Report 578, submitted by the Committees on Bank and Financial Intermediaries and Waste and Means on House Bill 8265. Committee Report 579, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Bill 8268. Committee Report 580, submitted by the Committee on Human Rights on House Bill 8269. Committee Reports 581 to 586, submitted by the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bills 8272 to 8277, respectively. Committee Report 587, submitted by the Committees on Agriculture and Food and Appropriations on House Bill 8278.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
I move for the consideration on third reading House Bill Number 7798, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, I... May I request the Secretary General to be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7798 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7798, An Act Increasing the Number of Board of Directors of the Baktan-Cebu International Airport Authority, meaning for the purpose Section 6 of Republic Act Number 6958, otherwise known as the Charter of the Baktan-Cebu International Airport Authority. Roll call of members in consideration of third reading of House Bill Number 7798. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advinggula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barzaga, Vaskug, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaik, Bulutwigtang, Bustos, Kabredo, Kagas, Kahayonuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huangko Jaime, Ko Huangko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Bella, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Cucheres, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun San, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Wominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodison, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisas Agabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Siada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tidoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilasco, Bilosatuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferta Luis Raymond, Villaferta Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Cristantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Udi Vina Grace, UJ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7798. Adyong, Alvarez Pantalyon, Barbers, Ko Wanko Jaime, Kuwa, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Parinas, Flores, Garcia Albert, Giko, Ligarda, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Marcoleta, Mastura, Singson Richel, Tambunting, Tan Samir, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Villanueva. With 287 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention, House Bill Number 7798 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to respectfully request that we recognize the guests of Congressman Wawo Fertes and Congresswoman Det Escudero. The guests are Mayor Ronel Lim, Vice Mayor Valentin Pura IV, Councillor Jordan Enaje, Councillor Marc Anthony Flestado, Councillor Roxanne Escanilla, Councillor Irwin Estremera, Councillor Danilo Pura, Councillor No Endaya, Councillor Cesar Esperida, Councillor Norven Areola, Councillor Ramilio Fajardo, and Miss Horsegón 2023 Rain Hilary Carrascal.
The House of Representatives welcomes our guests in the gallery. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the cluster of local bills, on consideration for third reading, it was already distributed to the members, and House Bill 8001 for this purpose may direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8001, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8001, an act strengthening further the powers and functions of the Authority of the Freeport Area of Bataan, AFAB, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 9728, otherwise known as the Freeport Area of Bataan, FAB, Act of 2009, as amended by Republic Act Number 11453. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8001. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Adwinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magisaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascug, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buahin, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Tagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tzuwa, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Ko Lada, Ko Liantes, Korvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Tagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo City Amina, Jonicio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Parinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fente Bella, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga Gonzalez, Aurelio Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Cucheres, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun San, Lara, Lasatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Wominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodison, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisas Agabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Siada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roques, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tidoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilasco, Bilosatuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferta Luis Raymond, Villaferta Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Cristantel, Yap Christopher, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Udi Vina Grace, UJ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8001. Adyong, Alvarez Pantalyon, Barbers, Kuwa, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Flores, Garcia Albert, Giko, Ligarda, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Marcoleta, Mastura, Singson Richel, Tambunting, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Villanueva.
With 289 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention, House Bill Number 8001 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the cluster of House of Higher and Technical Education, for consideration on third reading, House Bill 7908 and 7961. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bills 7908 and 7961, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7908, an act establishing in the Municipality of Lilooy, Province of Sambuanga del Norte, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Lilooy Sambuanga del Norte Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 7961, an act strengthening the Bulakan State University as a system expanding its curricular offerings and the composition of the governing board, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 7908 and 7961. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Adwinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magisaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascug, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buahin, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Tagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tzuwa, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Ko Lada, Ko Liantes, Korvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Tagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo City Amina, Jonicio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Parinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fente Bella, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Cucheres, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagun, Daphne, Lagun San, Lara, Lasatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman?
Mr. Speaker, this representation votes yes to House Bill Number 7908, but we are abstaining from voting on House Bill Number 7961, and we would like to explain the abstention later.
The gentleman will do so at the end of the vote.
Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Wominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodison, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisas Agabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Siada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roques, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tidoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilasco, Bilosatuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferta Luis Raymond, Villaferta Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Cristantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Udi Vina Grace, UJ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 7908 and 7961. Adyong, Alvarez Pantalyon, Barbers, Kuwa, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Flores, Garcia Albert, Giko, Ligarda, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Marcoleta, Mastura, Singson Richel, Tambunting, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Villanueva.
With 287 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and three abstentions, House Bill Number 7961 is hereby approved on third and final reading, and with a vote of 289 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention, House Bill 7908 is approved on third and final reading. The Honorable Manuel may now explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Nag-abstain ang representasyong ito sa butuhan para sa House Bill 7961. Mahalaga at dapat paunla rin ang Bulakan State University bilang pangunahing pampublikong pamantasan sa probinsya at pinakamalaki sa buong rehion na inaasahan ng maraming kabataan para matama sa ang libre, abot kamay, at dekalidad na edukasyon. Kasalukuyang problema ang understaffing ng mga guro at kawani at kakulangan sa pagmintinan ng mga pasalidad. Kahit pa may mga bagong gusali sa campus sa nagdaang mga taon, hindi po nito nireresolba sa kagi't ang pangangailangan ng mga estudyante at guro tulad ng kakulangan ng classroom, sira-sirang mga laboratoryo at palikuran dahil nakatuon pa ang mga programang pinapatupad sa balangkas ng komersalisasyon na mga espasyo sa pamantasan. Sa konteksto na ito, at nabanggit natin ang ilan sa mga pangunahing suliranin hindi lamang sa Bulakan State University, kundi maging sa iba pang mga pamantasan, nababahala tayo sa balak na bigyan ng karagdagang kapangyarihan ang Board of Regents na pumasok sa mga public-private partnerships sa research, instruction, extension, and acquisition na mga pasalidad at istruktura sa pamantasan, pati na rin sa Joint Curriculum Ventures at Joint Research Ventures. Tulad ng nangyayari sa ibang mga state university, paiigtingin na mga probisyong ito ang komersalisasyon at pribatisasyon sa loob ng sistema ng edukasyon. Ang mas mahalagang usapin, Mr. Speaker, ay ang pagtiyak ng sapat na pondo at suporta mula sa pambansang pamahalaan para pangalagaan ang pampublikong katangian ng Bulacan State University at para maisakatuparan ang mga positibong provisyon ng panukala. Kasama na dyan ang modernization ng mga programa, improved laboratory facilities at improved benefits para sa faculty at non-academic employees. Dahil dyan Mister Speaker, again we abstain from House Bill 7961. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes from the European Asian Business Council, the Head of Delegation, Gents, Rupert, Managing Director and Regional Head, Vice Chairman of the EU ABC.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes from the European Asian Business Council. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay pu kayo.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend session for one minute.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, again I would like to acknowledge the guests of Congressman Wawa Fortes and Congresswoman Bernadette G. Escudero from the province of Surssagon. They are Mayor Ronel Lim, Vice Mayor Valentin Pura IV, Counselor Jordan Inaje, Counselor Mark Anthony Flestado, Counselor Roxanne Escanilla, Counselor Irwin Estremera, Counselor Danilo Pura, Counselor Noe Endaya, Counselor Cesar Esperida, Counselor Norven Ariola, Counselor Ramilo Fajardo and Miss Surssagon 2023, Rain Hillary Carrascal, Mister Speaker.
The House of Representatives welcomes our guests from Surssagon. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Likewise Mister Speaker, would like to acknowledge the guest of Representative Steve Chong Bian Solon of Delone District of Sarangani. They are Honorable Salway D. Sumbo Junior Municipal Mayor of Malapatan Sarangani Province, Mayet Suib Municipal Administrator, Mark Christopher Quinho Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction Management Officer, Shirel Gleneda Municipal Budget Officer, Juliet Atok Municipal Treasurer, Sharlemay Talonding Municipal Accountant and Engineer Ricky Dionida Municipal Engineer.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Steve Chong Bian Solon from the municipality of Malapatan, Sarangani Province. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we also like to acknowledge the guest of Congresswoman Anyela Bianca de Tolentino. We'd like to acknowledge the guest of Congresswoman Anyela Bianca de Tolentino. They are Mayor Francisco Mendoza Junior, Counselor Kevin Isguera, Counselor Paulino Di Maranan Junior, Counselor Alexander Ocampo, Counselor Romulo Cap Molly Martinez, Counselor Ruby Litabay Remijio, Counselor Roylan Ortiz, Counselor Marvin Vidamo and Chief of Staff Ronald E. Perey.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Anyela Tolentino. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the guests of Representative Filimon M. Espares Co-op Natco Partilis, namely Romilly Soligen, Chairman of the United Negro's Transport Co-op Bacolod, Godfried Suravilla, Chairman of Negro's East Transport Service Cooperative Bacolod, Fritz Solatorio, Compliance Officer of Bacolod South, SUMAG Punta Tai Tai Transport Co-op, Romilly Domingo Officer, United Negro's Transport Co-op.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Espares from the various transport cooperatives. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the guests from the officials of the Bureau of Immigration, namely Commissioner Norman, the guest of Honorable Juliet Marie De Leon Ferrer, namely Commissioner Norman G. Tan Cinco, Deputy Commissioner Joel Antoniviado, Mister Rogelio D. Guevero Junior, Attorney Arvin Cesar Santos, Mister Fortunato Manahan Junior, Miss Judith Ferreira, Attorney Romain Pascual, Attorney Homer R. Arreliano, Attorney Chris M. Villalobos, Mister Chester Kevin S. Miss Donna Criza M. Sandoval, Mister Edwin Bugtong, Mister Jose Denis Javier, Mister Ann Camille Mina, Miss Jennifer Fernandez, Miss Ruby Tamayo, Miss Teresa Basilio, Mister Ronald Dorado, Mister Cesar Cuevas, Mister Joel Acera, Mister Peter Ortiguesa and Mister Jose Odicta.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Juliet Ferrer from the Bureau of Immigration. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I would also like to acknowledge the guest of Honorable Benny Abante, Miss Karen Nicole Picio of Santa Mesa, Manila, Miss Manila 2023 Candidate, former Miss Philippines Earth Eco Tourism 2019 and former Miss Earth Philippines 2019.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Benny Abante from Manila. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, under the cluster of higher and technical education, I move for the consideration on third reading House Bills number 7908 and 7961. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration under the cluster of public works and highways, I move for the consideration and third reading, House Bills number 425, 7768, 7769, 7770, 7933 and 7934. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be requested to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of House Bills 425, 7768, 7769, 7770, 7933 and 7934 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 425, an act renaming the Calibo Banga, Ballete, Batan, Altavas National Road, which is part of the Calibo Highway stretching from the Numansha-Calibo Boundary at Barangay Laginbanua in the municipality of Numansha, traversing Barangay's Publasion, Andagao, Estancia, Tigayon, and Linabuan Norte in the municipality of Calibo, Barangay's Linabuansur, Humarap, Mambob, Publasion, Tabayan, Libas, and Venturanza in the municipality of Banga, Barangay's Fulhensho, Feliciano, Calizo, Morales, Publasion, Cortez, and Aranas in the municipality of Ballete, Barangay's Lalav, and Kabugao in the municipality of Batan, Barangay's Kabugao, Linayasan, Odyong, Publasion, Manup, Kabanggila, up to the Capiz-Aclan Boundary in the municipality of Altavas, all in the province of Aclan as Congressman Allen Salas Kimpo National Highway. House Bill 7768, an act creating a district engineering office in the third legislative district of the province of Bulacan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7769, an act creating a district engineering office in the third legislative district of the province of Iloilo and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number 7770, an act creating a district engineering office in the second legislative district of the province of Aclan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7933, an act creating a district engineering office in the city of Antipolo, province of Rizal and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 7934, an act creating a district engineering office in the lone legislative district of the city of Lapu-Lapu and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 425, 7768, 7769, 7770, 7933 and 7934. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Al Mario, Al Monte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang Angara, Aquino, Aquino Mag Cisay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Limbinitas, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Tagas, Kahayon, Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Co' Anjali, Canatasha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Co' Huangco, Jaime, Co' Huangco, Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Quaresma, Dagok, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo, City Amina, Dionisio Domingo Duavit, Duhali, Du Terte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Frasnedi, Fantabelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin Gasataya, Gato, Go' Ed Christopher, Go' Mark, Goles, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neply, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horebata, Javier, Co' Olga, Co' Ricardo, Co' Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon, Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Liligarda, Libana, Limcachang, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Mordenava, Nisa, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, O'Connell, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodizon, Padianos, Paduano Paglas Palma, Pataligan Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumarin Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Hensha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes Rilio Rivera Robes, Rodriguez Yulojio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Sieda Marie, Romaldo Romulo Roques, Akdalan Sa Garberia Sa Kaluran Sa Salceda, Salisa Limbangon, Salos Alba Me Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Sinson Rachel, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihyan, Solon, Suon, Suon Sing Horashos, Suon Sing Michaela Angela, Suarez Deliado Tamayo Tambunting Tan Joseph Tan Keith Micah Tan Reynolds Michael Tan Samir Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut Tan Chaitan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Turti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozo Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Vilia, Villaferta Luis Raymond, Villaferta Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarazas Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Christofen, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Eric, Yap Eric, Yudivina Grace, Yudizel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 425, 7768, 7769, 7770, 7933 and 7934. Alvarez Pantalyon, Barber, Skua, Dayang Hirang, Duterte, Flores, Garcia Albert, Gillegarda, Magcino, Malapitan, Marcoletta, Mastura, Sinson Rachel, Tambunting, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Villanueva.
With two hundred ninety-three members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bills numbers 425, 7768, 7769, 770, 7770, 7933 and 7934 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we would like to welcome in the House the officials of the municipality of Mendez Nunez Cavite, namely Mister Speaker, Mayor Francisco Mendoza Junior, Counselor Kevin Isguera, Counselor Paulino Di Maranan Junior, Counselor Romulo Cap Molly Martinez, Counselor Rubi Litabay Remijio, Counselor Roylan Ortiz, Counselor Marvin Vidamo and Chief of Staff Ronald E. Perey.
The House of Representatives welcomes our guests from Cavite. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay pu kayo. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, under the cluster of tourism, ecotourism destinations, for consideration on third reading, House Bills 8003 and 8004 and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bills and call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of House Bills 8003 and 8004 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8003, an act declaring the municipality of Barlig in Mountain Province an ecotourism development area. And House Bill 8004, an act declaring the area encompassing Mount Damas and Ubud Falls located in Barangay Maasin municipality of San Clemente, province of Tarlock, an ecotourism destination. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 8003 and 8004. Abalos Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Al Mario, Al Monte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang Angara, Aquino, Aquino Mag Cisay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinitas, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Tagas, Kahayon, Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Co' Anjali, Canatasha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Co' Huangco, Jaime, Co' Huangco, Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuak, Quaresma, Dagok, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo, City Amina, Dionisio Domingo Duavit, Duhali, Du Terte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Frasco, Frasnedi, Fantabelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin Gasataya, Gato, Go' Ed Christopher, Go' Mark, Goles, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neply, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horebata, Javier, Co' Olga, Co' Ricardo, Co' Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon, Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Liligarda, Lagliban, Limcachang, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia. Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwan Odizon, Padianos, Paduanopaglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Ray, Estrilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagaberia, Sacaluran, Salceda, Sally Salimbangan, Salo Salvames, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suon, Swansing Horashos, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Michael, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan Watko, Tarriela, Theodoro, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tianco, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, 230, Umalio, Unabio, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Ferte Luis Raymond, Villia Ferte Miguel Luis, Bilanueva, Villiar, Villiar Aziz Suarez, Villiarica, Villago, Yam Suon, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZL Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second Call of Members in consideration on 3rd reading of House Bill Numbers 8003 and 8004. Alvarez Pantalyon, Barber's Kuak, De Yanghirang, Duterte, Flores, Garcia Albert, Legarda, Magsino Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Singson Rochelle, Tambunting, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Bilanueva.
With 293 members voting in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, House Bills 8003 and 8004 are hereby approved on 3rd and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few-minute suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that all the bills approved on 3rd reading today be transmitted to the Senate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider bills under Calendar of Business for Thursday and Friday. House Bill Number 7549, under Committee Report Number 427.
Is there any objection? The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7549.
House Bill Number 7549, an act declaring Sinulum Falls and Bulau Cold Spring, located in Barangay Tignapuloan, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, as ecotourism destination.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Honorable Chato be recognized to sponsor said measure.
The Honorable Edgar Chato is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, as Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism, I would like to sponsor Committee Report Number 427 on House Bill Number 7549, entitled "An Act Declaring Sinulum Falls and Bulau Cold Spring, Located in Barangay Tignapuloan, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, as Ecotourism Destination." Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpret the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we proceed with the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of individual amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Jose Manuel Alba from the 1st District of Bukidnon for his individual amendment. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Jose Manuel Alba of the 1st District of Bukidnon is hereby acknowledged.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this representation would like to propose the following amendments to House Bill Number 7549, as contained in Committee Report 427, entitled "An Act Declaring Sinulum Falls and Bulau Cold Spring, Located in Barangay Tignapuloan, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, as Ecotourism Destination." On Page 1, Section 1, Lines 1 to 2, delete the phrase "Barangay Tignapuloan, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental", and in lieu thereof, substitute "Barangay San Isidro, Municipality of Talakag, Province of Bukidnon."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Proposed amendment is accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment proposed by the gentleman from Bukidnon.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Alba may proceed.
On Page 1, Section 2, Lines 6 to 7, delete the phrase "Local Government of Kagayan de Oro City", and in lieu thereof, substitute "Municipal Government of Talakag."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Proposed amendment is accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move for the approval of the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Alba may proceed.
On Page 2, Line 3, Line 4, Line 9, and Lines 11 to 12, delete the phrase "Local Government of Kagayan de Oro City", and in lieu thereof, substitute "Municipal Government of Talakag."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is hereby accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Alba may proceed.
Amend the title of the bill to read as follows: "An Act Declaring Sinulum Falls and Bulau Cold Spring, Located in Barangay San Isidro, Municipality of Talakag, Province of Bukidnon, as Ecotourism Destination."
What does the Honorable Chato say?
No objection, Mr. Speaker. Proposal accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, with the permission of the distinguished sponsor, this representation would like to be included as one of the co-authors of the said measure.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the inclusion of Honorable Alba as a co-author of House Bill Number 7549.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, as amended, House Bill Number 7549. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
As many as are in favor of House Bill Number 7549 as amended, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill Number 7549 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Chair declares a privilege hour. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Honorable Representative Bernadette BH Herrera from the Partilis Bagong Generación be recognized to avail of the privilege hour. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
The lady from the Partilis BH, the Honorable Bernadette Herrera, is recognized for her privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues and distinguished guests, good afternoon. I rise today in the point of personal collective privilege to address a matter of utmost importance, one that concerns the ethical responsibilities of the media in our society. It has come to my attention that a recent news report has raised serious concerns regarding responsible journalism and the potential consequences it can have on individuals and communities. Today, I wish to shed light on this issue and emphasize the need for journalists to exercise caution and conduct thorough investigations before reporting sensitive information. On May 17, 2023, a devastating fire engulfed a residential structure in Carmel III Subdivision along Tandang Sora, Quezon City. The news of this tragic incident spread rapidly, capturing the attention of local and national media outlets. While it is crucial for the public to be informed about such events, it is equally vital for the media to ensure that accurate and verified information is shared. In the said report, the news anchor mentioned that a senior citizen was able to get out of the burning house but went back in. For the record, the said senior citizen was retired Brigadier General George Ancheta. Unfortunately, by eyewitness account, Brigadier General Ancheta never even had the chance to get out. It is disconcerting that the reporter obtained the information of a person's demise without confirming it through appropriate channels. Who provided this information to the reporter? It should not be the responsibility of the Bureau of Fire Protection or the Philippine National Police to disclose such sensitive information to the media before informing the family. The family should be the first to be informed, ensuring that they receive the news before it reaches other individuals, including the media. Moreover, in cases involving the reporting of deaths, it is important to have a code of ethics in place in the Philippines that mandates informing the immediate family first. For instance, school shootings in the United States, it is common practice for the media to inform the victims' families before reporting on the deaths. Such a practice demonstrates respect and empathy for grieving families. Furthermore, in incidents of accidents, crimes, calamities, and other similar situations, it is essential that media personnel do not approach victims and survivors for interviews without considering their well-being. These individuals are likely shell-shocked, requiring medical tests, debriefing, and psychological evaluation. Yet, in this particular case, the reporter was able to approach a survivor immediately for an interview. Why was the reporter granted access without considering the survivor's condition and the necessary support they might require? Freedom of the press is an indispensable pillar of any democratic society. Journalists play a crucial role in ensuring transparency, accountability, and informing the public about important events. However, with this freedom comes an immense responsibility to exercise caution, verify facts, and prioritize the welfare of those affected by the news being reported. Irresponsible reporting can have far-reaching consequences, causing undue harm to individuals, damaging reputations, and sowing panic within communities. In this particular case, the inclusion of unverified information about a presumed fatality has the potential to exacerbate the anguish and grief of the victim's loved ones, compounding their suffering during an already challenging time. As public servants, it is our duty to protect the rights and well-being of our constituents. Similarly, the media has responsibility to uphold the highest ethical standards in their reporting practices. While it is essential to disseminate news promptly, it should never be at the cost of accuracy and sensitivity. I therefore implore my fellow lawmakers and our esteemed media colleagues to reflect upon the principles of responsible journalism. Journalists should strive to gather verified information, conduct interviews, and consult reliable sources before making statements that can have significant consequences for individuals and communities. Moreover, I urge news organizations to invest in training programs and workshops that emphasize ethical reporting practices. By doing so, we can strengthen the media's ability to inform the public while minimizing the potential harm caused by misinformation or unverified claims. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues and distinguished guests, the power of the media to shape public opinion and influence society is undeniable. With this power comes great responsibility, a responsibility that demands utmost care and respect for the truth. Today, I call upon our media colleagues to reflect on the importance of responsible journalism and the need to prioritize accuracy and verification and sensitivity in their reporting. Moreover, alamin po natin, ano nga ba ang tamang protocol? Pag nangyayari ang ganitong pangyayari, pwede bang interviewin lang natin? Basta-basta naaksidente na nga, susugod ka. Hindi na nga maganda malay 'yung tao, magiinterview ka akagad. I would just like to refer this to the committee so that we can discuss what are the proper ethical standards that should be set in place in dealing with crisis situations such as this. Let us work together to ensure that our media serves as a beacon of truth, fostering a society that is well-informed, compassionate, and just. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Herrera to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
The speech of the Honorable Herrera is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Representative Eddie Bong Plaza from the Second District of Agusan del Sur for his privileged speech.
The gentleman from the Second District of Agusan del Sur, the Honorable Eddie Bong Plaza, is recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, good afternoon. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege as we confront a problem right under our heels. Philippine soil is facing its own crisis. Soil acidification is sucking our soil nutrients dry. Rice and crops' productivity rate is falling sharply every cropping season. Soil acidification is a result of excessive nitrogen application because farmers do not know how much and what type of fertilizer they should apply. So, why are we in this mess? Number one, our farmers have no access to responsive soil information. Number two, soil science as a field is neglected in our country. Number three, our government has neglected to come up with soil nutrient profile maps for our agriculture stakeholders. On April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, the Department of Agriculture issued Memorandum Order Number Thirty-two or the Implementing Guidelines on the Distribution and Use of Biofertilizers for the Purpose of Increasing Rice Production in the Country by Promoting a Balanced Fertilization Program to our Farmers. The memorandum warrants that biofertilizers can replace a part of the inorganic fertilizers used by our rice farmers. This is so as biofertilizers contain microorganisms that has the ability to aid soil health, improve soil fertility, and hence, increase crop yield. As promising as it may, as it is, Mr. Speaker, strong swift indignations were issued by Samahang Industria ng Agrikultura, or SINAG, which had been reported in the Philippine Star on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three. And, Mr. Speaker, SINAG asserts that DA insisting arbitrarily on using biofertilizer premised on the supposed price increase of fertilizers. SINAG recommended to our farmers to decide on the fertilizers they want to apply to increase production by handing out vouchers. Mr. Speaker, we have heard both the Department of Agriculture and our farmers, and it all seems we are yet missing again on an equally important factor in the agricultural yield equation. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, is it not about time to let our soil dictate the fertilizer we apply by primarily taking into account our soil's specific needs? Mr. Speaker, in my previous privileged speeches, I pleaded to put a stop to the wasteful practice of blind fertilizer application, that instead, we must anchor our agricultural practices in science and data-driven approaches in modernizing the agricultural sector in our country. For many decades now, our investment support to agricultural crop production through fertilizer subsidies has been enormous. It is imperative that we finally come up with ways which would make every farmer in this country see and enjoy the benefit from the increased yield as a positive impact of our massive fertilization program. With all your kind indulgence, let me present again the key to effective fertilization program: Soil-Test-Based Fertilization Program. Soil testing is crucial in, number one, optimizing crop production. Farmers will know what food crop is suitable for his farm, and he will also know what type and the rate of fertilizer can support the nutritional requirements of the crops planted to his farms for optimum crop yield. Number two, selecting the best fertilizer. Our farmers should be empowered to know that not all fertilizers can be applied or suitable to their farms. Number three, improving nutritional balance. The intended balance of fertilization program is based on a complex relationship or interactions of nutrients. This complexity of nutrient behaviors compels to undertake comprehensive soil testing. The benefits of balanced fertilization program can only be achieved when effective soil testing systems are established in our country. Number four, cost-effectiveness: saving money and conserving resources by applying only the amount of fertilizer needed for the crop. And number five, protecting the environment from contamination, runoff, and leaching of excess fertilizers. Mr. Speaker, overestimation or excessive fertilization has already taken its toll on our soil over the years. However, it has not reached the point where it cannot be fixed. There can never be more opportune time than today for us to prioritize the crafting of the National Soil Health Strategy with action plan to finally stop the culture of blind fertilization. Excessive fertilization has compromised soil health and caused perennially low productivity not only of our key food products, key food crops, but also on the product's nutritional value. With your help, as we have reported, Mr. Speaker, I and some of our distinguished colleagues have taken the lead to study soil science where it is most valued during our immersive study trips in Thailand and Australia. We have seen and observed how soil science plays the most critical role in this country's agriculture. In fact, Mr. Speaker, on March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we invited Professor Cheng Rong Chen, an internationally known soil scientist and professor from Griffith University, to give us an insightful lecture on Australia's Twenty-Year National Soil Strategy. This strategy sets out how Australia will value, manage, and improve its soils. It further aims to prioritize soil health, empower soil innovation, and strengthen soil knowledge and capabilities of our farmers. Mr. Speaker, we are losing fertile lands, and our soils are degrading rapidly. Given this valuable insights on soil science, soil testing, and national health policy, it becomes all-important to legislate measures that will revitalize soil science as a catalyst in the modernization of our agriculture sector as earnestly urged by our president. Allow me therefore, Mr. Speaker, to appeal for the support of this august body. My dear colleagues, let us prioritize and institutionalize a National Soil Health Action Plan. Let us begin by enhancing our soil assessment through the use of modern and advanced soil analysis in our soils laboratories, improved and upgraded through our collaborative synergy. I have initiated discussions with the directors of the Bureau of Soils and Water Management, Department of Science and Technology through Picard, and most recently, of our Bureau of Agricultural Research. All this to gather the best courses of action to establish a nationwide soil nutrient database, soil test-based fertilization mapping, and site-specific fertilization projects. The first giant step you are taking, Mr. Speaker, is the holding of the first Philippine National Soil Philippine National Soil Health Summit on June twenty-one to June twenty-two, heralding the theme "Securing Food and Nutrition Security Through Healthy Soil." It is an event that I and Congressman Mark Enverga, our agriculture and food chairman, have vigorously organized with the help of the Australian Centre of International Agricultural Research along with our soil stakeholders. The Department of Agriculture has invited provincial governors and provincial agriculturists, state agriculture universities, and academies to this event. I humbly ask all of you, my dear colleagues, especially those from our agricultural districts, to attend and participate in the summit. It is my hope that through our collective efforts, Mr. Speaker, this plea will translate into action plan in the same manner that other countries have taken. I trust that together we can increase the adoption of best management of soil practices to our farmers, improve soil health monitoring and evaluation, and revitalize soils research and development. Again, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, we owe it to our children and their children to keep our soil in its healthy, functioning state, ensuring every Filipino with sustainable agriculture and food-secured future.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Plaza to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
The speech of the Honorable Eddie Bong Plaza is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Ben Vino Abante Junior from the Sixth District of Manila to avail of the privilege hour.
The gentleman from the Sixth District of Manila, the Honorable Benny Abante, is recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Not so many hours ago, we woke up with a shocking news that the Central Post Office, located in the heart of the city of Manila, is the very seat of power in our country, was burned. Available accounts would show that this national heritage and iconic landmark caught fire just before midnight last Sunday, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, that reached general alarm. I do not know if our, uh, secretariat here has received the video because I just would like to show the video right now on the extent of the fire. Do we have it? Can we show it, please? I'd like you to know the extent of the fire. When I received the picture myself, not knowing it's the Central Post Office, I thought it was in Ukraine, you know? But this is right in the very heart of Manila. According to Postmaster General Luis Campos of the Philippine Postal Corporation, and I quote, "The whole building has been burned down from the ground, from the basement all up to the fifth floor." End of quote. And aside from mail, parcel, and national IDs that are for delivery within the city of Manila inside, the buildings, the building also houses extensive collection of stamps, including vintage one. Our mayor, Hanilakuna, made this statement, and I would like to read the statement of our beloved mayor. Wagu kayo mag-alala, ang lugar kung nasan nakatayo ang Manila Central Post Office, ayun po sa aming zoning ordinance, ay isang institutional zone. Pero maliban pa po doon, ang Manila Central Post Office ay nadiklara na noong twenty eighteen, ng national museum bilang isang important cultural property. Kapag ano ito po, hindi na maaaring patayuan po ng kahit anong gusali maliban sa naturang naturing na post office doon sa lugar na ito. Yan po ang statement, Mr. Speaker, ng aming mayor. It is for this reason, my, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues, that I rise before you today in this august chamber for us to look at and seriously consider the need and urgency of restoring, preserving, and maintaining our iconic landmarks and national heritage all over our beloved country. I think that the Philippines is one of, uh, the countries that are quite poor in restoring such iconic and heritage sites, Mr. Speaker. The Book of Proverbs find relevant on the subject with this instruction, and I quote, "Remove not the ancient landmark which thy fathers have set." Proverbs twenty-two and verse number twenty-eight. The Manila Central Post Office is an iconic landmark and a national heritage, Mr. Speaker. The Manila Central Post Office often called the Post Office Building, which is the main postal office of Manila, and also serves as the headquarters of the Philippine Postal Corporation. It's beyond argument, one of the iconic landmarks of the Philippines and a national heritage of the Filipino people. Considered as the grandest building during its time, the construction of the Manila Central Post Office, which became the center of Philippine Postal Service, was completed in nineteen twenty-six and was inaugurated in nineteen twenty-seven. It features a design collaboration of renowned architects Juan Emmerillano, known for his work on the Manila Metropolitan Theater and the old legislative building, Tomas Mapua, the architect behind the LaSalle University and Saint LaSalle Hall, and wrapped down in Neo-classical style. The building's frontage showcases a rectangular mass adorned with sixteen Greco-Roman iconic pillars that are lined up above the iconic steps. Although it suffered significant damage during the war in nineteen forty-five, it was reconstructed a year later, faithful to each original design. For all, for its exceptional cultural, artistic, and historical value, importance and significance, the Manila Central Post Office was recognized in November twenty-four, twenty eighteen by the National Museum of the Philippines as an important cultural property. Di ko alam, Mr. Speaker, kung bakit nun twenty eighteen lamang kinilala ito ng national museum. What happened, Mr. Speaker? Should be a wake-up call, and something should be done. Initial estimates pegged the damage at three hundred million pesos. Tatlong daang million peso lang, Mr. Speaker. Inabot po na more than thirty hours ang sunog na yan. Sapagkat, ang sabi po ng Manila Director ng Bureau of Fire Prevention, di sila makapasok sapagkat kulub po 'yung loob. Pero, Mr. Speaker, kung inyo't titignan po ang loob ng Central Post Office, yun po ay mga kahoy na ginamit nung araw na mga hardwood na tinatawag natin, yakal, nara, mulabi. Kaya mahirap po itong masunog, no? Now, itong figure na ito ay isang maliit na figure lamang, and I do not think that, uh, the damage the damage is only about 300 million pesos. While investigation as to the cause of the fire is still to be concluded, there is no indication that it was caused by nature. Hence, the great possibility, without any intention to point fingers, that it could have been prevented. Thus, we have a yearly Fire Prevention Month, but fires still happen. And so the relevance and urgency of giving special attention to our iconic landmarks and national heritage. I therefore, Mr. Speaker, call for a thorough investigation, not only to determine the cause of the fire, what brought about or what could have contributed to such cause, and what should have, should be done to ensure the prevention of fires from hitting our landmarks and national heritage in the future. And, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, this should be treated with dispatch. Failing to restore this landmark would result in a fragment of our identity shattered, a hole in our collective memory, a chapter of our story left incomplete. This, my dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, we cannot allow to happen. Preserving historical monuments, such as the Manila Central Post Office, serves as a vital link between generations, allowing us to bridge the gap between the past and the future. They provide a tangible connection to our predecessors, enabling us to understand and appreciate the challenges and triumphs that have shaped our nation. Without this historical building, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, we risk losing a crucial part of our cultural fabric, a part that serves as a constant reminder of who we are and where we came from. This is of particular importance to my constituents in Manila, because this representation recognizes that investing in the restoration of the historically significant structures such as the Manila Central Post Office may also contribute to urban revitalization and community development. I believe that if it is restored, it can breathe new life into its surroundings, acting as a catalyst for growth, regeneration, and even tourism. Local businesses could flourish, communities could thrive, and a renewed sense of pride and identity could emerge with the appropriate approach to rebuilding this edifice. A landmark such as a fully restored Manila Central Post Office could become a beacon of inspiration, encouraging further investment and creating vibrant cultural hubs for both residents and tourists alike. Let me stress again, Mr. Speaker, however, that the importance of rebuilding and restoring the Manila Central Post Office extends beyond its cultural and economic value. It is an act of resilience, an act that defies the forces of destruction and preserves our collective memory. Towards this end, I would like to most respectfully propose the following. Number one, that our iconic landmarks and national heritages all over the country be immediately evaluated, especially concerning structural and electrical soundness and integrity, safety, and health issues, as well as beauty. Gusto ko po ang sabihin, Mr. Speaker, sa ating mga real estate developers, nawags sanang galawin itong mga iconic and heritage sites na ito in the name of modern development. Number two, that on the basis of such evaluation, needed restorations, repairs, renovations, modifications, and beautifications be effected at the earliest possible time. Number three, that all such iconic landmarks and national heritage should be properly maintained and preserved. And number four, that a private foundation, let me repeat this, Mr. Speaker, that a private foundation, duly registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission in partnership with the government, be given the privilege and authority to administer and manage these iconic landmarks and national heritage. And, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, I am willing to help in putting up such foundation to partner with our government and the private sector for the sole purpose and mission of restoring, repairing, renovating, beautifying, preserving, and maintaining our iconic landmarks and national heritage all over the country. Kinakailangan din siguro, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, na ipagbawal na natin ang mga developers natin na magpatayo ng mga modern buildings na matatakpan itong heritage site na ito, kung pwedeng alamang, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, investing in rebuilding historically significant structures like the Manila Central Post Office is an act of hope, a belief in the power of our shared history to shape a brighter future. It is a commitment to preserving the values, traditions, and lessons that have commitment, that have molded us as a society. Let us unite behind these efforts and rally around this monumental task so we can breathe new life into our history and give it the honor and reverence it deserves. Together, we can rebuild what has been lost, resurrecting this architectural masterpiece to inspire our countrymen, especially the youth of the land. In 2026, we will mark the centennial of the Manila Central Post Office. That is only, Mr. Speaker, three years away. I nurture the hope, however, that when we celebrate this momentous milestone, we will be doing so inside a rebuilt and revived structure that will last for another hundred years and inspire generations yet unborn. Together, we can make this a reality. And therefore, with this privileged speech, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, I call upon our private sector to partner with the government in restoring and preserving not only the Manila Central Post Office, but all well-known national heritage site all over the country, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues. Maraming-maraming salamat po, at gusto ko muling sabihin sa inyo ang sinabi doon sa Book of Proverbs, "Remove not the ancient landmarks which your fathers have set." God bless the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the 4th District of Pangasinan, the Honorable Tof De Finesha, for his interpellation.
The Honorable De Finesha is recognized for his interpellation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I appreciate the reverence and share in the heartbreak of the distinguished gentleman from Manila, as well as the urgency for action and the passion that he so eruditely shared with us in this August chamber with regards to the recent and very unfortunate incident with the Manila Post Office and the fire that ravaged it. You know, we are days away from possibly enacting a new law amending the Heritage Code, which is very timely as it is Heritage Month. But to be welcomed with this incident is truly, truly heartbreaking. So, perhaps in support of the proposals shared earlier by the distinguished gentleman, will the Honorable Congressman Benny Abanta yield to just a few clarificatory questions in support?
Gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, how much was the estimated damage caused by the fire to the post office?
It was said, Mr. Speaker, that the initial estimates pegged the damage to about 300 million pesos, of which, you know, that's too small even to think about it.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, perhaps our, the honorable gentleman is of the same persuasion that it will probably cost more than 300 million to rehabilitate, given the need to evaluate the structural integrity of the building, and it's not an apples-to-apples damage restoration cost.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Speaker, for purposes of repair and restoration, would the distinguished gentleman be aware of the budget that has been appropriated to the National Commission for Culture and the Arts, or the NCCA, the National Historical Commission of the Philippines, or the NHCP, as well as even Philpost, which administers the post office in the 2023 General Appropriations Act?
Actually, Mr. Speaker, I'm not, so I would be appreciated very much if our colleague in Pangasinan would enlighten us on this.
Yes, so, Mr. Speaker, during the budget hearings from last year, as I was the vice-chair of APRO that was tasked to defend their budgets, we identified the total agency budget for the NCCA to be at 527 million, of which only 3.35 million pesos is allotted for repairs and maintenance.
Only 3.35 million? My goodness, what is that?
It's a, it's a travesty.
It's a pittance!
It's a pittance, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. And to add to that, the NHCP's budget in total is 221 million, of which only 17.8 million is set aside for restoration, preservation, et cetera, of such structures.
Again, Mr. Speaker, may I know the, uh, the budget being given to it out of 217 million?
17.8 million.
17.8 million, for the what? For the preservation?
For the Restoration, Preservation, Survey, Documentation of Historic Structures, Edifices, Ancestral Homes, and the Maintenance of the National Registry of Historical Structures.
Again, Mr. Speaker, my goodness!
It's very, very unfortunate. We did further research, and the budgetary support allocated to the Philippine Postal Corporation is at a mere 45 million, which is only really meant for reimbursement of franking privileges, so not necessarily for the purpose of doing any repairs or rehabilitation of the post office. Thus, Mr. Speaker, we can safely conclude that the agencies that are tasked to maintain the Manila Central Post Office, whether as a post office or, as was shared by Congressman Benny Abanta earlier, a cultural property or an important cultural property as declared by the National Museum in 2018, they don't have the necessary budget to restore the damage caused by this fire. And perhaps in, uh, budget hearings that will be in the offing for the 2024, we can explore increasing these agencies' allocations, specifically for restoration and maintenance of these very important cultural structures. So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, would you agree that public-private partnership would be needed insofar as rehabilitating the post office?
Exactly, Mr. Speaker. Why, I have actually, uh, suggested that we put up a foundation to actually restore, preserve, maintain all of the historical landmarks and heritage sites in the whole country.
Yes.
I also made a statement, Mr. Speaker, that, you know, I do not know why in our country we are so poor in actually preserving and maintaining the historical landmarks. And, Mr. Speaker, I'd like just to share and even say here that we always allow, the government, sometimes the LGUs, always allow developers to put up modern development structures and actually take away all of those historical sites, which actually we can actually preserve, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, and, Mr. Speaker, there's really a lot of value that can be derived from adaptive reuse of these historical structures. But to my point earlier, would the distinguished gentleman be aware of any kind of existing policy or mechanism or program that can enable these public-private partnerships with regards to the restoration or preservation or even conservation of cultural properties such as this?
Would you please enlighten us on this, Mr. Speaker?
So, just to put on record, Mr. Speaker, Section 35 of RA 10066, or the Heritage Code, reads as follows: "Tax exemption on donations. All donations in any form to the commission," referring to the National Commission for Culture and the Arts "and its affiliated cultural agencies. For this purpose includes the National Historical Commission, shall be exempt from the donor's tax, and the same shall be considered as allowable deduction from the gross income in the computation of the income tax of the donor in accordance with the provisions of the NIRC, or the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended." So, Mr. Speaker, there is an existing policy that can be activated, a legislative fiat program, perhaps if it exists already with the NCCA. But I'd like to ask, Mr. Speaker, the distinguished gentleman, if this provision has been activated in any way in the past or communicated to the many philanthropists that are possibly potential collaborators or potential supporters of heritage conservation, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, not that I know of. I think that we should even check with the government about all of these things being done.
Yes.
Actually, I do not even know of anyone that has actually used this provision of law.
Right. So, Mr. Speaker, we're also unaware if this provision in the Heritage Code has been activated, utilized, or in fact, if an IRR for that particular provision has been released since its passage. But nevertheless, we fully support all efforts leading towards restoration of these cultural assets, given the value that they bring to society. And at the same time, you want accountability so as to prevent further incidents of our cultural properties being damaged or destroyed. Last year, Mr. Speaker, there was an earthquake that really ravaged cultural sites in the north, even in Vigan and Ilohasur. And we were very happy to hear from the speaker that he has thrown his full support behind any kind of effort to rehabilitate, to assess the structural integrity of our existing cultural sites. So, on that note, Mr. Speaker, I, together with 34 members of the Arts, Culture and Creative Industries Block of the 19th Congress, or ACHIB, will be filing a resolution this afternoon, and we invite Congressman Benny to join us in this effort to investigate the fire that ravaged the Manila- that ravaged the Manila Central Post Office, a national cultural treasure and an important cultural property. And of course, given the recently enacted Philippine Creative Industries Development Act, or RA 11904, it is also a cultural site, which is one of nine developmental domains in the creative economy framework that can be leveraged for, as was shared by Kong Benny, for tourism, for branding, for nation-building, for social inclusion, and many other governance areas. We believe it's crucial to investigate the cause of the fire, to assess the response mechanisms employed, and to evaluate the effectiveness of existing safeguards and preventive measures to prevent similar incidents in the future, specifically within the context of a heritage site as, such as the Manila Central Post Office. So again, thank you to our distinguished colleague for the passion that he has shown, the commitment and the love that he has shown towards our cultural heritage and preservation. National, it's a National Heritage Month, so I encourage everybody to experience our cultural sites and not wait until a fire ravages the site so that you're not unable to visit them. I, for one, am guilty and I am ashamed that I have not been able to visit the post office and now it's on the brink of possible collapse. And, Mr. Speaker, we look forward to the enactment of the amendments to the Heritage Code. And again, thank you for everyone's time and to the distinguished gentleman from Manila. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, it is sad that we have to wait for a fire like this for us to do something about our heritage site. I wish that the government will be more proactive than reactive in cases like this. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, to our gentleman in Pangasinan for these questions. Thank you very much. And I fully support the resolution that you're going to file.
Thank you.
Majority Leader. I move that the privileged speech of the Honorable Abante, together with its interpolation, be referred to the Committee on Rules.
The privileged speech of the Honorable Benny Abanta, along with the interpolation of the Honorable De Venesia, is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we take up items for consideration and approval on second reading. And for this purpose, the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill 8203 as contained in Committee Report Number 552.
The Chair will entertain a motion to terminate the privilege hour.
My apologies, Mr. Speaker. Before said motion, we move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The privilege hour is terminated. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move that we consider items for approval on second reading and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill 8203 as contained in Committee Report 552.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8203.
House Bill Number 8203, An Act Modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Defining Its Powers and Functions, Further Professionalizing Its Organization, Upgrading the Compensation and Benefits of Its Officials and Employees, and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move that the Honorable, the Honorable Juliette Ferrer of Negroes Occidental be recognized for sponsorship speech.
The lady from the 4th District of Negroes Occidental, the Honorable Yoette Ferrer, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, as a Chairperson of the Committee on Justice and a principal author of this bill, it is my honor and privilege to sponsor House Bill Number 8203 as contained in Committee Report Number 552 entitled "An Act Modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Defining Its Powers and Functions, Further Professionalizing Its Organization, Upgrading the Compensation and Benefits of Its Officials and Employees, and Appropriating Funds Therefore", or "The Bureau of Immigration Modernization Act". This bill is a substitute bill to House Bill Numbers 127, 194, 274, 1069, 2398, 3300, and 4047, filed respectively by this representation: Congressman Rufus Rodriguez, Congressman Jordan Jesus Romualdo, Congressman Luis Raymond El Rey Villaferte Jr., Congressman Miguel Luis Villaferte, Congressman Suyoshi Anthony Horibata, Minority Leader Marcelino Libanan, Congresswoman Marie Bernadette Escudero, and Congressman Gastam Munting. This bill has undergone numerous changes and versions from the time the first measure was filed by none other than our minority leader, Marcelino Libanan, in 2004, during the 13th Congress. House Bill Number 8203 is the latest incarnation of this bill in the 13th Congress, and is now a comprehensive piece of legislation that has benefited from all the refinements through 19 years of the, in the legislative mill. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, the strengthening and modernization of the Bureau of Immigration is all the more imperative now than it was in the previous Congresses. We have witnessed the hard work of our immigration officers during the pandemic, as well as the sacrifices they have made, making sure that our fellow men are safe while traveling to and from our country and minimizing the effects of the global pandemic on our shores. We have seen our immigration officers exert Herculean efforts to protect our citizens from human trafficking and illegal recruitment, as well as preventing terrorists, sex offenders, and other undesirable foreign nationals from entering the country. All these are being done by our immigration officers while being one of the lowest-paid employees in the government service, with the entry level of Immigration Officer 1 position holding only salary grade 11. With this measure, we will upgrade the salaries of our immigration officers and other personnel of the Bureau, who are the first line of defense when it comes to protecting our international borders. We will also grant them additional benefits and incentives, such as the right to use 50% of their collections from the express lane fees for the augmentation of their salaries, and create an immigration trust fund that will be used for the modernization and professionalization of the entire Bureau, including new equipment and facilities. With this bill, we will be giving the Bureau and its personnel the resources to perform their functions to the best of their abilities. Mr. Speaker, this bill will also update and harmonize our immigration laws, such as Commonwealth Act Number 613 or the Philippine Immigration Act of 1940, in order for our immigration policies, rules, and regulations to be responsive and in touch with international developments in the 21st century. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, it is high time that we modernize the Bureau of Immigration and all other laws relating to immigration in our country. In fact, this bill has been identified as a LEDAC priority measure in the 19th Congress. Moreover, the passage of this bill is in line with the economic agenda of the President. The improvement and modernization of our immigration system, making it more efficient and effective, will boost our economic growth, attract more foreign investments, encourage tourism, and create more jobs. It will also improve the morale of our immigration officers and personnel and give them the benefits they deserve. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, our immigration officers are the frontliners in our country's fight against terrorism, human trafficking, illegal recruitment, and other illegal activities perpetrated by foreigners on our soil and against Filipino citizens. It is imperative that we give the Bureau of Immigration and all its personnel the necessary funding and tools in order to improve their services and to enhance their capabilities our country's first line of defense on our borders. For these reasons, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, I am earnestly seeking the immediate approval of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we now move that we recognize the Honorable Minority Leader, the Honorable Libanan, Nonoy Libanan, for his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Libanan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I rise as one of the sponsors of this bill with the express permission of the Chair of the Committee on Justice, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as earlier stated, I filed this bill in the 14th, in the 13th Congress, but it failed to be approved by the Senate. And in the 14th Congress, this was refiled. And if my memory would serve me right, the principal author of which was my idol and the veteran legislator Congressman Edsel Agman. And this was approved in the bicameral conference committee meeting. However, Mr. Chairman, this was ratified by the Senate, and it failed to be ratified by no less than the House for lack of coram. Henceforth, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, in the 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th Congresses, this was approved by the House, but it failed to be approved by the Senate for lack of time. Now, Mr. Speaker, we are here again in this August chamber. And finally, I would like to, this presentation would like to thank our Speaker and no less than the President of the Republic, who included this measure as one of the LEDAC priorities. That's why, at this point in time, Mr. Speaker, we are now set to approve again finally, but in the earlier period of the 19th Congress, this measure, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, no less than our first national hero, who was the first immigration officer and the person of Lapu-Lapu, will be very happy that finally we are modernizing our immigration. Mr. Speaker, our present immigration law is a 1940 law, which was passed into law via Commonwealth Act Number 613. In other words, Mr. Speaker, that law was passed and signed by a foreign president, President Eisenhower, who was sitting as president at the time in the United States, and the Philippines being a part of the Commonwealth, had this measure. And 80 years, 83 years passed. This is the first time that we will revisit this bill. And I'm happy, Mr. Speaker, that more than one-half of our colleagues are co-authors of this bill. Mr. Speaker, there is really a need to pass this measure because passing this measure would professionalize our immigration, upgrade the compensation and benefits of its officials and employees, Mr. Speaker. And further, we will be able to comply with the obligations and standards set by international law in the admission or exclusion of foreign nationals and be able to promote international order and justice by denying the use of Philippine territory to persons who are engaged or likely to engage in terrorism, human smuggling and trafficking, and criminal and other nefarious activities. For, Mr. Speaker, the role of the immigration is not only the processing of entry and exit of foreign nationals, but in legislation, it has already the function of combating human trafficking and human smuggling. Further, Mr. Speaker, this will promote and modernize structures and mechanisms necessary for the administration of immigration laws in keeping with the changing demands of the country's role in the global community. It will also professionalize the immigration service by instituting a rigid system of screening and selection of immigration officials and employees and promoting their development. It will promote investments, trade, and commerce, cultural exchanges, and other forms of friendly relations and cooperation. And it will update and harmonize Philippine laws, rules, and regulations on immigration. Key provisions of this bill, Mr. Speaker, will strengthen the Chairperson, who is the Commissioner, and two Deputy Commissioners, and their mandates. It will strengthen their decision on cases, applications relative to deportation, revocation on immigration status, reacquisition and retention of Philippine citizenship, issuance and revocations of all visas and permits, declaration of indigency and legalization of residence in accordance with law. It will also empower them to cite and punish for contempt in relation, in relation to the discharge of its quasi-judicial functions in accordance with the rules of court. The Board will be able to prescribe and promulgate rules of procedure for proceedings before it and other functions, Mr. Speaker. And it will strengthen the creation of directorates, the administration, finance, logistics, information and communications technology. This will be a new directorate because in 1983, there was no internet yet. The planning and research, the alien registration, immigration regulation, immigration intelligence, immigration law enforcement, Mr. Speaker. There's no, right now, there's no immigration law enforcement division. Disambled Representation created this when he was the Commissioner of Immigration, but the succeeding Commissioner, I don't know for what reason, deleted or deleted this directorate. Legal Affairs and Human Resource Management Directorate, which is not existing as of this point in time. Mr. Speaker, it will also create regional offices that shall, that shall be proposed by the Board according to political or administrative regions and created pursuant to the authorization of Congress. And moreover, Mr. Speaker, the bill will authorize the Board to retain and use every year 30% of its collections from immigration fees, fines, and penalties and other income that may be collected by the Bureau not to exceed 1 billion 200 million pesos every year. It will establish an immigration trust fund, which shall be the source, which shall be sourced from the 30% retained income, which shall be administered by the Board in accordance with existing government auditing rules and regulations, and shall be used exclusively as follows: 50% for modernization of equipment, facilities, and offices used by the employees of the Bureau, including capital outlay for the establishment of new buildings and field offices for the effective implementation of this act; 30% for the payment of employee benefits provided in this act; and maybe hereafter, provided by the Board with approval of the Secretary of Justice; and 20% for further professionalization of the employees of the Bureau through trainings, seminars, and other career advancement. of the Bureau through trainings, seminars, and other career advancement programs. It will adjust also the salary grades of its employees and further harmonize existing immigration rules, regulations pertaining to the issuance of visas to foreign nationals. Mr. Speaker, in our quest to have a progressive and developed country, Mr. Speaker, we shall have a very strong gate and man by inspired and strong, competent, modernized gatekeepers, who are the employees and officers of the Bureau of Immigrations. Hence, Mr. Speaker, I would like to solicit all the support needed in this August chamber to deliberate and finally approve this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Senior Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Paul Daza, for a manifestation.
The Honorable Paul Daza is recognized for his manifestation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Please allow me to commend the leadership. Madam Chair Julia Payer and our minority leader. I wanted to include under, for the record, that it's been long overdue for the House to pass new legislation. As mentioned earlier, it's been eighty-three years. The minority leader said earlier, half of the members of the House has co-authored this bill. I would like to add my name to make it half plus one. So I manifest my co-authorship for this very good legislation that I'm hoping will pass soon. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who would wish to interpolate the sponsors of said measure, I move that we close the period of debate of sponsorship, debate, and interpolation.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is open.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There being no committee amendments, I move that we close the same.
The period of committee amendments is hereby closed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move that we open the period of individual amendments. And for this purpose or for the move that we recognize the Honorable Jill Bongalan of Partay List Akobikal to introduce individual amendments.
The gentleman from the Akobikal Partay List, the Honorable Jill Bongalan, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to propose the following amendment on page two, lines four to five, between the words "the" and "immigration", and delete the words "Bureau of". And the entire section should now read: Section one, short title: This Act shall be known as the Immigration Modernization Act.
What does the distinguished sponsor, the Honorable Ferrer, say?
We have no objection, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the proposed amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no further amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of individual amendments is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill 8203 as contained in Committee Report Number 552 as amended.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 8203, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 8203 as amended is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed with other items for consideration on second reading, may we acknowledge the guests of the House of Representatives, the guests of the Committee on Foreign Affairs from the National Task Force for the West Philippine Sea, Director General Ricardo de León of NICA, Under-Secretary Ignacio Madriaga of the Department of National Defense, Assistant Secretary Maria Angela Ponse of the Department of Foreign Affairs, Assistant Secretary Julius Yano of the Department of Transportation, Assistant Secretary Andre Del Rosario of the Presidential Communications Office, Ms. Heidi Changkoko of NCWS, Major General Jeffrey Hetchenova of the AFP, Captain Carter Lumahang of Namibia, and Captain Donette Dolina of the PCG.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Committee on Foreign Affairs from the National Task Force for the West Philippine Sea. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7819 under Committee Report 483, and the request of Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7819.
House Bill 7819, an Act Declaring the Maritime Zones Under the Jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I hope to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Foreign Affairs, the Honorable Rachel Arenas of the Third District of Pangasinan, be recognized to begin sponsorship of the measure.
The lady from the Third District of Pangasinan, the Honorable Rachel Arenas, is recognized for her sponsorship.
Mr. Speaker, I stand today to speak, to seek the immediate passage of House Bill Number 7819, an Act Declaring the Maritime Zones Under the Jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines. This bill will demarcate the meets and bounds of our maritime territory, which is fundamental to our national interest as an archipelagic state. As Chairperson of the Committee on Foreign Affairs and one of the primary authors of this bill, I urge my fellow legislators to act expeditiously in putting our archipelagic house in order. We started this arduous but significant task in 2009, when the Philippines passed Republic Act 9522, or the Philippine Archipelagic Baselines Law. This law serves as a statutory tool to demarcate the Philippine maritime zones under the United Nations Convention on the Law of the Sea, consisting of internal waters, archipelagic waters, territorial sea, contiguous zone, exclusive economic zone, and continental shelf. Declaring these maritime zones through an act of Congress is the next crucial and indispensable step in securing the Philippine maritime territory. Mr. Speaker, this measure is beneficial to our pursuit of food and economic security. Claiming an exclusive economic zone and contiguous zone of 200 nautical miles from the baseline allows the Philippines to exercise its sovereign rights to explore and exploit, conserve, and manage the natural resources in these waters. Considering that the majority of us here in Congress represent provinces, municipalities, and cities that are coastal or near-coastal areas, a clearly defined exclusive economic zone and continental shelf will benefit our constituents who will have the full and exclusive access to the Philippines' enormous maritime space. The measure will allow us to fully optimize our blue economy, which remains untapped and underutilized. Declaring the Philippine maritime zones is also imperative in promoting the territorial integrity of our country. It is important to note that Ong Clause is only permissive and these maritime zones are not automatically ascribed in favor of a state. To avoid confusion with the international community, we need to declare that we are claiming the full breadth of our maritime entitlements. It is important to note, Mr. Speaker, that our neighbors such as Brunei, China, Indonesia, Japan, Malaysia, Palau, Taiwan, Singapore, and Vietnam have already legislated or proclaimed their maritime zones. Enhancing maritime governance is key to promoting our territorial integrity. A maritime zones law will provide direction to different government agencies mandated to defend our maritime territory against foreign intrusion, protect the maritime environment, enforce our sovereign rights, and implement corresponding regulations to secure our maritime domain. For instance, declaring our contiguous zone will strengthen the country's law enforcement capacity necessary to prevent infringement of its customs, fiscal immigration, or sanitary laws and regulations within its territory or territorial sea. Establishing our maritime zones is necessary to address the relatively arbitrary configuration of our maritime zones, which were legislated pre-Ong Clause. We have always called for a rule-based order in maritime security, but our laws are not compliant with Ong Clause. As a responsible member of the international community, the Philippines need to align our domestic laws with Ong Clause. International law worked in our favor when we filed the arbitration case against China on the matter of the South China Sea. It is said that good fences make good neighbors. It is true in the context of maritime delimitation. Having a Philippine Maritime Zones Act will enable us to negotiate with our neighbors with whom we have overlapping maritime claims. It is noted that the Philippines has overlapping maritime jurisdictions with Indonesia, Palau, and Japan, which need to be demarcated. Mr. Speaker, I speak today. Many of our fishermen, as I speak today, many of our fishermen have been deprived of their rights to fish in our waters. Hundreds of vessels of our big neighbor have been regularly, albeit illegally, traversing the West Philippine Sea. Our coral reefs have been destroyed because of island building and poaching activities of the same country. My dear colleagues, we cannot defend and protect our maritime territory without declaring what is ours. We cannot pursue food and economic security without delimiting the jurisdictions of the Philippine maritime territory. We cannot strengthen our position in the West Philippine Sea and negotiate with our neighbors if our maritime boundaries are not recognized by the community of nations. We cannot secure the future of the Filipino people if we will not enact a maritime zones law. Mr. Speaker, the meaning of national interest is survival, the protection of physical, political, and cultural identity against encroachment by other nation-states. Our President Ferdinand Bongbong Marcos said that he will not abandon even a square inch of our territory to any foreign power. We should help the President in realizing this noble goal. Let us be at the forefront of securing the state and the future of our people. Let us put the Philippine archipelagic house in order. And before I end, Mr. Speaker, let me again mention, Mr. Speaker, that the National Task Force for the West Philippine Sea, consisting of eighteen executive agencies, are here with us today in full force to support the passage of the Maritime Zones Act. The member agencies have a unified position in this matter and have been lobbying for the immediate passage of this measure for several Congresses. For the information of my colleagues, the Maritime Zones Act is included in the legislative agenda of the Philippine Development Plan 2023 to 2028 to ensure the country's peace and security. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments... The period of amendments is open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we proceed to consider the individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The period of individual amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Kiko Benitez of the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Kiko Benitez is recognized for his amendments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If the good Chairwoman of the Committee on Foreign Affairs would allow, I would like to insert a new provision after Section 11, after Line 6, Page 5. A new section, Section 12, to be entitled "Reciprocity and Mutual Respect." The provision reads, "The rights and privileges of foreign vessels and aircraft in the Philippine maritime zones declared herein are recognized under conditions of reciprocity and mutual respect. Vessels and aircraft of foreign states that do not abide by or act inconsistently with the Ounclos and international law shall not be entitled to exercise the rights or be owed the obligations relative to the maritime zones declared herein." Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
What does the distinguished sponsor, the Honorable Rachel Arenas, say?
I have no objection, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is hereby approved.
Thank you very much, sir.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other amendment, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7819.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 7819, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7819, as amended, is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations.
Before we proceed, Mr. Speaker, we would like to acknowledge the guests of Representative Felimon Espares of Co-op Natco Partilist, namely Brian Yap, Chairman Makario Quevedo, and Board Member of Cebu People's Multipurpose Cooperative, Roseli Langit.
The House of Representatives welcomes the guests of the Honorable Espares. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay po kayo. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 451 under Committee Report Number 442. And also like to request that the Secretary please read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 451.
House Bill 451, An Act Encouraging Corporate Social Responsibility, Providing Incentives Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Mario Vitorio Marino, 5th District of Batangas, for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from the 5th District of Batangas, the Honorable Marvin Marino, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues in this august chamber. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. As Chairman of the Committee on Trade and Industry, I have the honor to sponsor House Bill Number 451, entitled "An Act Encouraging Corporate Social Responsibility, Providing Incentives Therefore", in consolidation with House Bill Numbers 8001001, 2699, 3627, 4139, 6131, and 6909. Corporate social responsibility is a management concept whereby companies integrate social and environmental concerns in their business operations and interactions with their stakeholders while meeting its growth and revenue goals. House Bill Number 451 seeks to institutionalize corporate social responsibility in corporations, partnership, and other establishments doing business in the country, wherein domestic or foreign. It mandates business entities to prioritize the interests of society by reevaluating and recalibrating their actions and their impact on their customers, employees, shareholders, communities, and environment. By practicing CSR, House Bill Number 451 entitles companies with incentives in the form of deductions on the expenses incurred in the exercise of their CSR mandates. Under the same bill, CSR-related activities include: A. Charitable programs and projects; B. Scientific research; C. Youth and sports development; D. Cultural or education promotion; E. Services to veterans and senior citizens; F. Social welfare; G. Environmental sustainability; H. Health development; I. Disaster relief assistance; and J. Employee and worker welfare, CSR-related activities, among others. Likewise, House Bill Number 451 allows stock corporations to retain profits in excess of 100% of paid-in capital stock to be used for expansion or CSR projects and programs. It mandates the Department of Trade and Industry to recognize and reward business establishment for outstanding, innovative, and world-class CSR-related services, projects, and programs, and extend endorsements and recommendations to domestic and foreign corporations doing business in the Philippines, who are candidates for recognition in international award-giving bodies for their CSR-related activities. Moreover, House Bill Number 451 mandates local government units where CSR-related activities are conducted to extend whatever assistance is necessary for business establishments to accomplish their CSR programs and projects. Furthermore, it mandates the Secretary of Finance in coordination with the Department of Trade and Industry and the Securities and Exchange Commission to promulgate rules and regulations of this act. Mr. Speaker, CSR has been gaining momentum over the years and has become one of the most standard business practices of our time. A properly implemented CSR program can bring along a variety of competitive advantages for businesses. These rewards include enhanced access to capital markets, increased sales and profits, operational cost savings, improved productivity and quality, efficient human resource base, improved brand image and reputation, enhanced customer loyalty, better decision-making, and risk management processes. The House of Representatives has long recognized the value and benefits of CSR. Proof of this is the consistent filing and introduction of the proposed CSR Act in previous congresses. During the 18th Congress, the House of Representatives unanimously approved on third reading the proposed Corporate Social Responsibility Act, whose provisions are similar with the current House Bill Number 451. However, the CSR Act was enacted upon by the Senate until the previous Congress adjourned in June 2022. Nevertheless, the Committee on Trade and Industry remains steadfast in seeking the enactment into law of the CSR Act under the current 19th Congress. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, in view of these considerations, your support for the immediate passage of the proposed CSR Act under House Bill Number 451 is earnestly sought. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to request that we recognize Kong Raul Manuel of Cubatan Partilist for his interpolation.
The Honorable Manuel is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the good sponsor be willing to accept a few questions regarding the bill?
Certainly, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Tanong lang po natin, pwede po bang may specify na ating sponsor kung ano ang mga makakonser na activities in line with corporate social responsibility? Ano pong mga specific na proyekto o programa ang pwedeng matawag na CSR?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Under Section 3, it is defined: Letter A. Charitable programs and projects; Letter B. Scientific research; Youth and sports development; Cultural or educational promotion; Services to veterans and senior citizens; Social welfare; Environmental sustainability; Health development; Disaster relief and assistance; Socialized and low-cost housing; Employee-worker related CSR activities. Yun po ang nakalagay sa Section 3, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, hypothetically, may isang korporasyon na nagdonate ng pera, halimbawa, sa isang charitable foundation. Yun po ba ay matatawag natin CSR?
Well, it depends on what the corporation does with the donation and if the one who donated will specifically state that the money donated is used for CSR projects.
Mr. Speaker, ang gusto nating matiyak sana ay mas malinaw na mga definitions kung ano ang CSR. Halimbawa po kasi, paano yun kung merong korporasyon, nagdonate siya sa isang foundation, pero 'yung foundation na yun ay pagmamay-ari din or minamange ng mga tao na nasa leadership din nung korporasyon? So, pag ganun po ba, Mr. Speaker, maiwasan ba yun under this House Bill?
Well, Mr. Speaker, kung meron pong siguro ang investigation at lumabas dun sa investigation na merong anomaly dun sa pagkakagamit nung pera, gaya po nasabi ko kanina, depende po yun sa specific purpose nung donate na pera doon sa kompanya. So, pwede namang po, under this act, ay ang SEC po is mandated also to further investigate any korporasyon under the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, in case na may korporasyon na gumawa nun, ano ang pananagutan nila? Paano natin sila mapapanagot dun sa kanilang ginawa?
Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, hindi po kasama dito 'yung mga pananagutan na yun because this is related to the CSR projects. But, like I said, if kung meron pong investigation, then there are specific provisions existing under our existing laws dun sa mga pwedeng maging pananagutan ng isang kompanya.
Mr. Speaker, may we know kung ano po 'yung current laws na pwede nating mainvoke para 'yung mga gumawa nun? Eh, mahold accountable talaga natin. Lalo na't gusto natin kung merong CSR, hindi siya naaabuso ng mga korporasyon, na ibig sabihin gumawa sila ng quote-unquote "kabutihan", pero may balik din pala sa kanila. It will still be in line with their vested interests, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, give me a minute because we are researching the specific law.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker.
Session resumes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang tanongan po kanina ay ano 'yung mga batas na pwedeng iapply in case there is a fraud or violations of a korporasyon? Under the Revised Corporation Code, Section 165, there is a fraudulent conduct for business. So, under that section, yun po ang mga pwedeng penalties ng isang korporasyon. But dito po ay wala po ditong penalties dahil ito po ay voluntary in nature. Yun pong CSR.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Meron po bang government agency or body na siyang magregulate or magmo-monitor ng mga CSR activities
Yeah, the agencies are DTI, Finance, and SEC. Yun po ang mga agencies na naataasa magmonitor, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ano po ang mga pamamaraan ng mga ahensya na ito para i-monitor? Ano po 'yung proseso na pagdadaanan ng mga korporations? Who would want to have CSR activities?
Well, CSR is a voluntary act as of right now. Pero ang nakalagay po dito sa proposal natin na ito ay ang Department of Trade and Industry ay inaataasa magroon ng awards and recognition sa mga CSR projects. And meron pong periodic reports ang lahat ng organizations na isasubmit in relation to their CSR activities as part of their annual and regular report to the SEC, DTI, and Department of Finance.
Okay. Thank you for that, our good sponsor. I have no further questions, Mr. Speaker. But to end this interpolation, kaya po natin na-bring up ang ganung mga tanong dahil po ayaw natin na ang mga aktibidad na may magandang intensyon sana, di ba, ay pwedeng magamit for self-serving interests. And I would like to point out, although of course, this is not in our country, pero gusto natin siyang iwasan dito sa atin. Kaya tinanong natin kanina talaga 'yung mechanisms for accountability. Kasi to point out, Mr. Speaker, as of last year, 2022, the most generous donation, ibig sabihin na classified siya as CSR activity, ay ginawa ni Bill Gates. He donated $20 billion of his money. Pero donate po niya sa kanyang personal foundation. So, kung nagagawa po yun sa ibang bansa, ayaw natin na magaya din yun sa atin. Yun lang po, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Thank you. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no more interpolators, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of interpolation and debate is hereby closed. The period of interpolation and debate is hereby closed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote for second reading, House Bill Number 451.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 451, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 451 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 198 under Committee Report 456, and I therefore request the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 198.
House Bill 198, an Act Providing for the Revised Warehouse Receipts Law of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Trade and Industry, Representative Mario Mourinho of the 5th District of Batangas be recognized to begin his sponsorship.
The Chairman of the Trade and Industry Committee, the Honorable Marby Mourinho, is once again recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues in this August Chamber. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. As Chairman of the Committee on Trade and Industry, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 198, entitled an Act Strengthening and Modernizing the Warehouse Receipts System, Repealing Act Number 2137, or the Warehouse Receipts Law of 1912, and for other purposes. And urge its approval and consolidation in House Bills Number 1394, 1938, and 5552. House Bill Number 198 seeks to strengthen and modernize the 100-year-old Republic Act Number 2137, or the Warehouse Receipts Law of 1912, as amended. The existing law prescribed a relatively simple system by which farmers and other workers from the agricultural sector can store their goods in a warehouse legally engaged in the business of storing goods for profit. The warehouse receipt issued by the warehouseman can then be traded or encumbered, making it a potent commercial and financial instrument. Mr. Speaker, the clamor to update the present yet outmoded Warehouse Receipts Law was raised as early as the 17th Congress. The call for the revision of the Act Number 2137 came in order to keep pace with the developments concerning modern warehouse receipts system in the world and to be attuned with the growing needs of our agricultural sector. During the 18th Congress, the House of Representatives approved the proposed revised Warehouse Receipts Law on third reading and transmitted the same to the Senate. However, the bill was enacted upon by the Senate as the previous Congress adjourned in June 2022. The proposed revised Warehouse Receipts Law under House Bill 198 seeks to establish a central electronic registry for all warehouse receipts to be made readily available online and which shall be eventually integrated with other existing registries. Thus, a party can simply deposit his goods and products in the warehouse, assured that his goods shall be taken care of in exchange for a warehouse receipt which can easily be traded, bartered, or sold in order to obtain the necessary credit with the use of a reliable and secure central electronic registry. Banks and other financial institutions will not be reluctant to accept these warehouse receipts in exchange for loans as they can easily check the veracity of the warehouse receipts as well as the presence and quality of the corresponding goods and products in the warehouse. Likewise, the proposed revised Warehouse Receipts System under House Bill Number 198 provides for the rights and obligations of the warehouse operators. It mandates the Securities and Exchange Commission to create and maintain a modern, electronic, centralized, and nationwide registry of all electronic warehouse receipts as well as the regulation and accreditation of operators and provides for penalties for violations thereof. As such, it will be, it will enable the agricultural sector to convert goods and products into credit in a faster and simpler way, promote economic activity by increasing access, particularly for the entities engaged in agricultural businesses such as farming, to least cost credit by establishing simplified unified framework for the storage of goods in warehouses and the subsequent trading of interest therein. Mr. Speaker, we need to take advantage of the modern technological advances that could be used to establish a system that is more secure, transparent, reliable, and promote ease of doing business. For the Philippines, an updated warehouse receipt system is expected to result in numerous benefits, including: mobilizing credit to agriculture by creating secure collateral for the farmer, processor, and trader; smoothing market prices by facilitating sales throughout the year rather than just after harvest; reducing risks in agricultural markets; improving food security and credit access in rural areas; increasing market power of smallholders by enabling them to choose at what point in the price cycle to sell their crops; helping to upgrade the standards and transparency of the storage industry since it is electronic and requires better regulation and inspection; helping to create commodity markets which can enhance competition, market information, and international trade; providing a way to gradually reduce the role of government in agricultural commercialization; contributing to lower post-harvest losses due to better storage conditions by inducing farmers to store in more appropriate warehouses; lowering transaction costs by guaranteeing quantity and quality; and increasing quality awareness by assuring the quality deposited is the same as the quality withdrawn. In view of the foregoing, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, the immediate passage of the proposed revised Warehouse Receipts Act is earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, um, there being no other interpolat, no interpolators, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee and individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 198.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 198, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 198 is approved on second reading. Congratulations, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 8144, containing Committee Report Number 540, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill. So, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8144.
House Bill 8144, an Act Defining the Crime of Tax Racketeering and Providing Penalties Therefore, Amending for the Purpose Section 257 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debates.
Is there any objection? The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Honorable Representative from Rebeisiha, Honorable Mika Swan Sing, be recognized to sponsor the said measure.
The Honorable Mika Swan Sing is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Today, as Senior Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, I have the privilege of sponsoring House Bill Number 8144, or the Anti-Tax Racketeering Bill. Given our government's critical reliance on tax revenues to fund public services, efficient and effective tax administration must be given paramount importance. While the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended, already defines various forms of tax evasion as criminal liabilities, this does not yet include the systematic and coordinated scheme to evade and defeat taxes. These schemes involve fake firms, sometimes called ghost firms, that issue fraudulent receipts which allow their supposed clients to claim additional tax deductions on their value-added tax and corporate income taxes. There is evidence that substantiates that these schemes are prevalent in our country and result to huge revenue losses to the government. In March of this year, criminal complaints were filed by the BIR against four ghost corporations selling fictitious sales invoices and receipts, which translated to a revenue loss of 17.63 billion in income taxes and 7.91 billion in value-added taxes from years 2019 to 2021. This shows that the government lost 25.5 billion pesos in tax revenues in three years alone due to these schemes. One factor that contributes to the prevalence of these schemes is limited enforcement. Enforcement has proven to be challenging to the Bureau of Internal Revenue despite their hard-line stance against these entities. Thus, House Bill Number 8144 seeks to complement the BIR's enforcement efforts by introducing a broader set of acts and emissions done to misrepresent tax deductions. It also seeks to define the crime of tax racketeering, which is any coordinated scheme or operation to evade or defeat any tax imposed under the tax code through the fraudulent use of receipts, returns, and other records with a minimum amount of 10 million pesos in taxes evaded. Moreover, House Bill Number 8144 sets stiffer penalties in general and further graduates penalties depending on a person's degree of participation in the offense to serve as a deterrent to the commission of such crime. It increases the penalties provided for in the NIRC from the current fine of only 50,000 pesos to 100,000 pesos to 5 million to 10 million pesos. Likewise, it increases the period of imprisonment from the current 2 to 6 years to 6 to 20 years. By increasing the fine by a hundredfold and by lengthening the period of imprisonment by up to more than three times, House Bill Number 8144 hopes to substantially curb the incidence of tax racketeering in the country. It gives the BIR teeth to run after perpetrators and recover billions of pesos in lost government tax revenues. Following the doctrine that taxes are the lifeblood of the government, the deliberate act of knowingly fabricating falsified receipts and invoices is not just a simple criminal activity, but rather one that constitutes economic sabotage. Thus, intervention through House Bill Number 8144 is a proactive effort by Congress to further prevent tax evasion while recouping evaded revenues. In line with this, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, the Committee on Ways and Means seeks the support of the members of this August Chamber for the approval of House Bill Number 8144. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debates.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we, that we open the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of individual amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Alfileto Alfell Bascog from the 1st District of Agusan del Sur for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Bascog is recognized.
Um, Mr. Speaker, and with the permission of the Honorable Sponsor, I would like to formally propose the following amendment for consideration. On page 3, line 13, under subsection letter C of Section 257, defining the crime of tax racketeering, delete the word "avoided" after the word "taxes" and replace it with the word "evaded". The first paragraph of Section 257, letter C, shall now read as follows: "Any person who engages in any coordinated scheme or operation to evade or defeat any tax imposed under this code through the fraudulent use of receipts, returns, and other records with a minimum amount of 10 million pesos in taxes evaded, shall, in addition to other penalties provided by law upon conviction thereof, suffer imprisonment of not less than 17 years, but not more than 20 years, provided that the conviction of a credit obtained under this section shall not be a part to filing of a civil suit for the collection of taxes."
What does the Honorable Swan Sing say?
I accept, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
If there, if there's no objection, the period of ammen, individual amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 8144.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 8144, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8144 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the Vice Chairman of Ways and Means, Mika Swan Sing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we now move that we take up House Bill 8204 as contained in Committee Report 553, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8204.
House Bill 8204, an Act Providing the Regulatory Framework to Conserve, Protect, Restore, and Sustainably Manage Peatlands and Their Resources to Enhance the Country's Resilience to Climate Change.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move that the Honorable Ed Chato, the 1st District of Bohol, be recognized for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from the 1st District of Bohol and Chairman of the Climate Change Committee, the Honorable Edgar Chato, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, and my esteemed colleagues in this August Chamber, as Chairman of the Committee on Climate Change, together with the principal authors and over 100 co-authors, I am honored to sponsor House Bill Number 8204 under Committee Report Number 553, entitled an Act Providing the Regulatory Framework to Conserve, Protect, Restore, and Sustainably Manage Peatlands and Their Resources to Enhance the Country's Resilience to Climate Change. The bill seeks to enable our country to manage peatlands sustainably and to conserve and protect the remaining ones, taking into account their value as nature-based solution or ecosystem-based approach to address climate change. Peatlands are wetlands' ecosystem where partially decomposed organic matter has accumulated over thousands of years under waterlogged conditions to form carbon-rich soil called peat. Peatlands are called Latian by the Tagalog and Huyong-Huyong by the Warais and the Visaya. Peatland forests can absorb carbon dioxide and release oxygen. They also store water, play host to flora and fauna, and act as carbon sinks. Peatlands store more than twice as much carbon as all the world's forests combined. Global peatlands store about 500 billion tons of carbon, and 14% or 68 billion tons of that carbon sink can be found among Southeast Asian peatlands, which constitute 6% of the total global peatland area. The Philippines has approximately 20,000 hectares of peatlands, foremost of which are the Sabah Basin, peatlands in Leyte, and the Kaipungan, peat swamp forest in the Agusan Marsh, Agusan del Sur. The Kaipungan Peat Swamp Forest alone is estimated to store 22.9 million tons of carbon or 3,000 to 6,000 tons of carbon per hectare. However, our peatlands are slowly being degraded. Out of the original 3,0088 hectares of the Sabah Basin, only 1,288 hectares have remained intact. Our peatlands are being decimated by forest clearing, drainage, land conversion, and burning. Thus, we seek to prohibit these acts through this bill to avert further degradation or worse disappearance of our peatlands. The degradation of our peatlands lead to the release of carbon dioxide, which contribute to global climate change. Their drainage results to land subsidence and forest fires. The degradation of Indonesian peatlands in 1997 led to forest fires which affected other countries through transboundary haze which proved to be a health hazard. By approving this bill, we can likewise honor our nationally determined contribution under the Paris Agreement to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as well as our commitment to the global biodiversity framework to protect 30% of our country's land and marine habitats by 2030 during the Conference of Parties 15 on the Biological Diversity Convention in December of 2022. Experts say that we only have seven years remaining before we reach the tipping point for climate disasters and biodiversity loss by 2030. We must do our part to prevent these twin crises from happening. I urge my fellow legislators to support this measure and earnestly seek this chamber's approval of the bill. Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who would wish to interpolate our sponsor, we move that the period of sponsorship, debate, and interpolation be terminated.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the same.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now move that we approve on second reading, House Bill 8204 as contained in Committee Report 553.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 8204, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8204 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include the additional co-authors to House Bill Number 7728, 7754, 8144, 8203, and 8204, and the House Resolution Numbers 911, 912, 915, 983, and 987 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Commissions on Rules, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move that we adjourn session until 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Session is adjourned until tomorrow at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.